Are we ready? It's time to call the meeting in order. Would you call, roll call please?
Counselperson Bruni.
Here.
Bruni.
Here.
Crowhart.
Here.
Here and short.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next, oh, first of all, I'm a little scattered. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. Make comments on the agenda as you see and also item four is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. With that, we'll go to item number two, consent of agenda A, approval of agenda B, approval of minutes of the October 14, 2013 council meeting and C, receipts and dispersments.
Make a motion to approve consent of agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve item number two, consent of agenda A, approval of agenda B, approval of minutes of the October 14, 2013 council meeting and C, receipts and dispersments. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Item number three, projects. A, SAC City facade project, one, consideration of approving Tallgrass Historians as preferred vendor for section 106, historical consultant services and authorizing the form of a contract. They come highly recommended.
They are, when you hire an architect, that's one thing. These people are required as part of the federal grant in order to supply the historical review of the properties. It is a contingent requirement for the federal grant.
So these are just a historical consultant?
They are only going to review the historical aspects and make reports to the federal government to make sure that we're not doing anything that would in any way hinder the historical presence and...
What is this gonna run?
You know, could I address that?
Yeah.
I'm on the committee for the facade and there were, I think, three bids that came in. The high one was from the University of Iowa at 24,000. The next one, like 10 or 12 or something like that. And then this firm at 6,000. So I thought, you know, how come the big disparity from 24 to 6, that's a 400% difference? So it seemed like that was a fairly reasonable approach and it's part of the thing for the grant.
I was just curious about Iowa then, they're probably worried about parents, trying to get them some more money so they can win some more games.
He deserves it, of course.
Well, you have that consulting fee to Iowa State to hire all the experts.
Yeah, that's what they need.
I make, what do you need here?
A motion to approve.
The Tallgrass Historians as preferred vendor for section 106.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Tallgrass Historians as the preferred vendor for section 106, historical consultant services and authorizing the form of a contract. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Crowhart.
Item number four, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the If there are none, we'll go on to license and permits. A is a renewal license for the SAC County Fair doing business as SAC County Fair Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales. We have any concerns at all?
None at all.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal license for the SAC County Fair doing business as SAC County Fair Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales.
Start it.
Motion has been made and seconded to renew the license of the SAC County Fair doing business as SAC County Fair Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Crowhart.
Yes.
Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Item number six, miscellaneous. A, a second reading of the ordinance number 2013-250 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Amending Provisions pertaining to Chapter 27 Airport Commission."
Make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance number 2013-250 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Amending the provisions pertaining to Chapter 27 Airport Commission."
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2013-250, "The Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Amending Provisions pertaining to Chapter 27 Airport Commission." Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Crowhart.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'd recommend to waive the third reading.
That's what I was gonna say.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to waive the third reading. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Crowhart.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Six, yes.
Are all of our boards now in line?
What does that mean?
I guess I'm gonna say, are we looking at the mix?
Oh, for gender?
Gender.
Oh, okay.
The airport commission still has not had turnover to create the gender balance yet. With the exception of the airport commission, I believe, all, the art council may still need one more male representative when the mix, as the mix changes. But other than that, most of the boards are now in complete compliance, yeah.
I didn't understand what that meant. Okay. Item six, miscellaneous B, second reading of ordinance number 2013-251 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Amending Provisions pertaining to Chapter 23, subsection 5, Planning and Zoning Commission Powers and Duties."
I'll make the motion to approve the reading of the ordinance of number 2013-251 with a reading and the acceptance as read by Mayor Powell.
Start it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 2013-251, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Amending Provisions pertaining to Chapter 23, subsection 5, Planning and Zoning Commission Powers and Duties." Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Bruni.
Yes.
Crowhart.
Yes.
Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is this something that you?
Make a motion to waive the third reading.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to waive the third reading?
Of ordinance 2013-251.
Yeah, we know.
Okay.
You gotta put it in.
Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Houston.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Spunky tonight.
Motion carried.
He's got three more.
Thank you.
He's only got three more.
Oh, spunky over there. Six miscellaneous C, discussion on League of Cities Conference, and I think Bill has a discussion tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm gonna turn this from a short meeting into a very long one. No, just kidding.
Did you look, did you see the looks you got?
With that being said, and the looks that I got, I'll be correct.
It's great portrayal.
Make a motion to cut that out.
And I'll give one handout, which is one of many pages of the handouts for this first one, and I'm just gonna refer to just a very small portion of it on the back, in the back side.
Thank you for the handout.
So if you pass those out and... Put one over. So the first meeting that I attended was how to engage the citizens of your cities in a meaningful way. And Phil Jones is the city administrator of Waverly, and he went over how to create and use surveys as an effective tool. And in making up the survey, it's real important to come up with key questions so it truly measures the things that you want to find out about. And the purpose is to measure how citizens feel about different items and to be proactive in connecting with the citizens so it's not just a one-way street. And, you know, and in surveys, it's good to announce ahead of time that it's coming, maybe accompanied by the, with a letter from the mayor. And the questions are reviewed by an outside source to make sure that they're valid and, you know, give you good information. Jeff Schott from the University of Iowa, who's conducted several meetings with us here, is capable and willing to do that. In fact, he served on the group that was, you know, presenting this particular section. And so they do that service there. And it helps establish priorities and gives justification for the things that you'd be using going forward. In other words, sometimes we're kind of wondering where do we go on a particular project or whatever. Whereas if we have the surveys and we follow trends over time from year to year, we can watch for changes and you just don't promote yourself, but you engage the citizens to come up with, you know, more involvement with the local citizens. And when citizen surveys don't match, the action of the council just highlights the need for education and informing citizens why we aren't doing what they really wanted us to do. And on the back side of the handout that I gave you, under six B through E, B is we set a base for future trends and service quality ratings. We now know where certain areas may need to invest, investment of change or improvement. And we can use responses as input for goal setting, budgeting and strategic planning. And it kind of ties things together. If you're gonna ask for their input, you need to know how you're going to use it, at least in a general sense, before you ask for it.
Yep.
So, and they said do them about the same time each year and try and measure things and the feelings of the community as things are going forward and look back over a period of time to see what's taking place. The next thing that they discussed, well, they discussed a number of different things. One thing that I thought that might apply to our city, and we've talked a little bit about it, and that is a mini-retreat, and Jeff Schott from the University of Iowa kind of outlined how we should do that if we do so. It's an open discussion, and he said have it at a place away from your city council meeting room. And at that meet, and you publish, you know, what's gonna be on the agenda. There's really no set agenda, but, you know, discuss different things. No decisions can be made and no policy changes are made. It's just, you know, kind of a brainstorming session, you know, with organization to it too. But it lets for a little bit more frank discussion take place, you know, have it open to the public, the press and so on. And just kind of, hopefully, you know, ties the council and the mayor a little bit more closely together so we can, you know, think more going ahead as opposed to just deciding on things at the city council meetings. You know, we could decide how many times we want to have it a year. He said maybe five or six. That, to me, might be a little bit too much. Maybe one every quarter, every six months, you know, those kind of things we could work out. But, and, you know, and invite the public and then invite experts on particular things that you're gonna be talking about. Main thing is, is to keep good relations with the citizens as well. And a couple of high points, too, be realistic about your resources, make sure what you are doing is working, be flexible and adjust your strategies. It's key to try to develop trustworthiness, stay with the facts and don't tell lies of omission. In other words, don't just, you know, kind of gloss over things and just not say anything, you know, creating a sense of distrust, but, so avoid lies of omission. And if there's a delay in something, be frank with the citizenry and just be upfront with what's going on and why. You know, and it was just don't promote, but engage, get information out there when things go bad and use your resources such as your website, the newspaper, Curtis, our TV page that we have on. And one other thing that was suggested, a city photo contest, people, you know, like to see themselves. And last thing, keep your goals in front of you. It helps you make your decisions. So that was the first one.
Before you move on, Bill, I just heard two comments. Did they happen to mention how many of the 900 they got responses on?
I do have a...
They did say a number, but I don't remember what it was.
I have a, and I wasn't gonna go over this, I do have three copies or four copies of the summary of that.
I was just curious.
And I'll give you one of those and I'll let you kind of, and it gives kind of the results.
The only other thing I was gonna say is, there was one thing of their philosophy I would question. And that is, they made the comment about always doing the surveys at the same time. My experience is, is that if you do them, say for instance, in the fall every year, people are more mindful of snow, less mindful of the pool and the parks. So if you alternate when you do it, you'll actually find your responses change with the seasons to some degree. So I would question that philosophy, just a little bit of always doing it at the same time.
Unless you did four of them and you always did them at change of season.
Absolutely.
And it addressed that, that the most recent things will skew the findings as that's the most prominent thing. So it does address that in that second handout.
You know, Bill, at the, you know, like this work session or whatever, we always had those on the school. You know, we'd just sit down, okay, if you got projects, educational issues, we'd just, you know, at three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon, or whatever it took, you know, and you just, you know, talked. And that's, I think, would be very, very helpful.
I think so, too.
All added in as a, during the orientation, all added in as a discussion item that we're planning to, I mean, it's something we've talked a little bit one-on-one at different points about, too. I'll throw it in during the orientation, that's something we're looking at doing. I kind of like the quarterly idea and I like the idea of maybe being, maybe even it being topical based, that you have a particular topic at this one you're going to discuss. We ask an expert to come in or something like that, educate ourselves. I mean, the intent's not to make a decision. The intent would be to further our education level on particular issues. I think that's great.
You know, and another thing that came up, and I wasn't gonna mention this, but, you know, your major employers in the community, you should maybe reach out to them on occasion, maybe have, you know, a representation from the council and the mayor, maybe go up to VT on one time and then maybe some others go up to the hospital, you know, visit with the county and just, you know, do, you know, an exchange, what are your concerns, what would you like, you know, what to us to consider and so on.
That is a good idea.
And, you know, if nothing else, it just creates good relations. You know, when's the last time we engaged really with VT? You know, at least an attempt to make them feel a part of the community. You know, I mean, they're one of our major employers and we ask certain things of them, you know, to donate and so on, but we really don't give them the chance to talk to us.
Absolutely.
We can do that with the hospital, Parkview and the schools as well.
You know, a great example of that, Bill, is Brandy and I took a trip up to, for instance, VT was the one that kind of sparks the discussion. This summer, we took a trip up to VT because there hadn't been a lot of inner communication and just asked them if there was anything that they would like to see the community do for them. And the only communication we got back at that time was they wanted crosswalks from the parking lot over to the building, which was a minor request and made justifiable sense considering the amount of volume of people walking across there.
Especially an hour twenty a minute.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's amazing, a lot of times, what I found in that case and the two or three others we've done is, a lot of times, people don't want grandiose things. They would, sometimes they have simple solutions or simple ideas that make us a more safer community or a better community without being financially prohibitive. Kind of interesting some of the things you run into in those.
And this was the next presentation, it happened to be the noon meeting that actually Barb, Teresa and I and Gary said.
He went to a different one.
Yeah, the three of us and Gary attended this, this was the general speaker. Good motivational speaker, retired Navy Captain Mark Adamcheck, you know, a couple, some of the highlights, he said, "Selfless service and we are committed to them," meaning the citizens, "not just us." In a survey, it was done by a major university, I forget what university it was, found that 73% of the people in this country believe that the character in this country is getting, going downhill. 24% thought it was about the same, and that leaves about 3% thinking that it's getting better. And so he said, "Our mission is to change the trajectory of that perception of poor moral values by many of those in leadership positions." He pointed out, like, the, you know, governor of Illinois is in jail, in prison.
Two of them.
Two of them. South Carolina's former governor, you know, was on a trip to South America with his new honey and then has now been elected to the House of Representatives. Went on, went on with about four or five different episodes like that and says, you know, if we have people like that and we're accepting this, you know, where are we going with this whole thing? And we have, he said, "We have to focus more on our morals based on, we have to base our leadership based on good morals." And he says, "In this country, the sense of entitlement is scary and most of us enable this sense of entitlement with a lot of different people." And he said, "One of the, you know, pitfalls can be trivialization. And when we are mission-driven, we can trivialize anything that gets in our way." And, you know, in other words, kind of abandoning some of the good moral things, as long as we have the end in sight, anything goes. And that's becoming kind of a standard in this country and we need to reverse that. And he went over the stages of values development. Number one's establishing the values we prize and accept. You have to make a preference of choosing, we have to, you know, choose to believe in a certain way. And the third thing is finally implementing a commitment, set the stage and act it out. And, you know, he's had a lot more to say and certainly, you know, Barb and Teresa, when they want to present their thing, I'm sure that there are other things that they perhaps picked up on that. Did you think?
Well, it was a long, it was a long talk and you could have heard a pin drop and he, and he's...
I would have liked to see him focus more on the positive. He spent too much time telling us all about the negative and how everything negative's going on and how this country's going downhill and yada, yada, yada. Then in the end, he started to talk about how we, as citizens, can help build everything up again and then he ran out of time.
But there, he has a website and he, it's, and he said, "I'm sorry I didn't get to that. You can go to this website and take the comments further. I just ran out of time today." What he had to say, it was a lecture from a school and it was usually, I think he said, two hours long. He was trying to present his information in two hours and it was like, he talked to us, what, 45 minutes?
Ten hours.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Well, and the next point, and this will be brief, was my...
You're kidding, where are you, Bill?
No.
Ouch.
And, you know, and this is kind of important. Okay, this is on the, can I go on, Adam?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor, you may go on.
Yeah, we're interested. Now that I realize that I'm being pushed along, I will kind of begrudgingly proceed.
Go ahead, Bill.
This was put on by Annie Loomis, who's the, who is full-time job as nuisance abate, or one of her jobs is nuisance abatement in the city of Marion. And she's, the topic of her talk was putting your junk in your trunk and she's considered the Marsha Clark of Marion, pretty much the dragon lady, but she does get things cleaned up. She went through all the different procedures that you can go through and she said, "If magistrates aren't giving out injunctions or whatever," she says, "I just take them to the district court." And with a district judge acting on it, usually that gets their attention and magistrates work with them real well. And I do have a full procedure that she uses and I would like, if possible, Adam, to make a copy of that and we'll maybe present it to...
That might be a good thing, you know, like at the retreat, this might be a good topic to talk about. This is what you're talking about, you know, going through some of these things, that might be a good discussion point.
But she's a good nuts and bolts, okay, what step do you take and here's what you do. And she says, you know, "There's junk cars out there and whatever, if you, they haven't picked it up in 48 hours after the second notice, you come and you remove it and you bill them." And, you know, and if you want to take it to the junker down in Carroll or wherever...
And they need to get paid for it, but you can bill them.
Yeah. But if you take the junk car away, you can collect...
Get money from it, yeah, that's true.
That's the way to do it.
We ended up with what, one?
Car.
One car.
One last year we did that with, Bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, good report, Bill. Good, good report.
And then this goes for revitalization downtown. I'll share that with Adam and Barb.
I went to it.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so you went to it.
I might do that one when it's my turn.
All right. And an attorney, Jack Lipoback, he gave what to watch out for in terms of handbooks, personnel policies, the things that you do that cities can do to hang themselves. And I do have a full handout here and I'm gonna share that and perhaps go over that with Adam.
That would be real good.
We can do that now, if you like.
Okay.
Sure. That's quite enough. It's been a good report, though.
And when I was, when I was discussing this with Adam this morning, one of the suggestions he had was, was, you know, maybe what we should be doing is looking at our code of ordinances and each meeting, just go over one small code of our ordinances and it'll do two things. Number one, educate ourselves as to what they really are. Number two, is there anything in them that you really need to or want to change?
I think that'd be a good deal after the first of the year.
And give the tour early so we can study it before the meeting.
We did that with the P&amp;Z board last year, I think it was, Susan?
Yes.
And I think it had an impact. I think a lot of the P&amp;Z members feel like they have a better, solid understanding of the code as a result of doing this.
Nick, I'll have you, give you the choice, should I go on or should I conclude it at that point?
I'm ready to go to the next item.
Okay, all right.
We'll get, we'll pick it up another meeting.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Jan, you're worried.
You...
Jan, you're worried.
Shame on you.
You're welcome.
Tell me he's out of order.
You are out of order. Okay, we are going six miscellaneous D. Consideration of, consideration of postponing November 11 council meeting to Tuesday, November 12 due to Veterans Day.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, approved to postpone November 11 council meeting to Tuesday, November 12. Would you call for a vote?
Mr. Houston.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruni.
Yes.
Bruni.
Yes.
Crowhart.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Update on various city projects.
To keep Councilmember Houston happy, I'll keep this as short as possible.
That's good.
Community signs, he's partially got one up, he's gonna be working on it, completing it and getting the second one set up on Friday and Saturday of this week. He hasn't put the panels up yet because of wind conditions whenever he's been coming down here. He's been waiting for a time period when the wind wouldn't be such an issue for him. The organizational signs, the one on North Fifth Street, of course, was done this summer. The one on South 16th Street was completed last week. 509 West Main Street, we had a little bit of a project going on today for that. They think that they might be done by tomorrow on that piece of property.
I oughta say that I've never seen anybody use that piece of equipment. Of course, I don't see very many people do it, but with the care that was taken to take down that building, it was really something. And they were riding in that bucket and taking down pieces, one piece at a time up there when they started. They were really very careful and it's so nice to know that the buildings were not damaged in any way, shape or form.
The asbestos was removed Wednesday through Friday of last week and the building was taken down this today. On the street project, I got an update from the engineers. They're right now doing the post-grind patches. Of course, you can't see those above ground, so they could not tell how many were actually going to require patches underneath the grind until they did it. It only ended up being about half as many as they were expecting, so that's a good thing on the project. However, a little modification we're probably going to see towards the end of the project was, is that as they did the grounding, they find that the asphalt was a little thicker in some areas than they had expected. So it's probably gonna be a wash financially in the overall cost of the project. We'll save money on the patchwork, but we're probably gonna end up spending more in the area of replacement a- uh, asphalt, so, um...
Where they broke the concrete, you know, like chipped it out into the concrete way? What, did they just fill that with asphalt and smooth it out?
Yes, and, and actually, in a lot of, a lot, a lot of cases, that was splash already, and they had to find where the edge of the splashing was in order to take it off. And that wasn't as bad as they expected it to be either, that was another area that it came in underneath.
Are you talking about by the stop signs, or what are you talking about?
No, like, in the, in the, little edge where they have taken the asphalt out and along the edge of the cement part, there's places that are really broken in, jammed.
They gotta remove some of those other pieces, so they put all fresh in, or what are they gonna do there? That was my question.
Cement?
No, the asphalt. Some of it fell out, some of it broke out, you know, some of these little pieces of asphalt. Are they gonna take the rest of those out, or leave them, or what?
I guess you would need to show me, if you can come down to the office sometime.
Well, you know, I say, "Here's the edge of the road."
I know that they put some in to create, they left some in to create edging, so that people wouldn't have such rough up and down scenario.
Yeah, they put it back in, so that we could get through the intersection.
Well, no, I'm talking about on the street level itself, you know, where there's some chunks out, you know, where there's some old asphalt.
Uh-huh.
Same thing Barb was talking about.
Yes, the same thing, are, that's at the intersections. I'm talking about in the street itself, there's some of it that fell out, some of it, you know, they chipped out.
Oh, they're required to fix all of that patching, they do it with extra asphalt, is what they do.
I know, but are they gonna take some of the old stuff that's still there? Are they gonna chip some of that old stuff out or not?
The old asphalt?
Yeah, right along the edge.
I'll have to, I'll have to ask, Nick.
That's also into the concrete part.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, there's just a little layer there, how, you know, what good, how good a shape is that in, does that just chip out real easy?
Are we gonna have more holes, is what you're getting at, after we do this, is it gonna cause?
If, should we do this now?
Sure, I'll hit up the engineers tomorrow morning and see what they say.
So, is the temperature thing gonna be an issue?
No, in fact, uh, they think based upon the calendar schedule they are seeing right now, they'll be able to pour and be completely done by November tenth.
As long as it gets to, what, what's the temperature thing, fifty?
Yeah, I think it's forty-eight or fifty, somewhere right in that range, and it only has to maintain that for a couple of hours in order for them to pour it. Um, it really doesn't take a quite a, quite much, too much time, so, yeah. The, uh, the next thing was the airport flyover, you approved the agreement. Um, a check's supposed to come to me this week, so that we can start to close out that project. The only other three things I had were equipment. Um, the Bobcat, it was drove, uh, he did chop another five hundred dollars off the price, and everyone seemed to be happy with it, so, uh, I'll be taking steps in, at the first meeting in November to cut him a check for that. And then, um, the police truck and the tonner truck, the ton truck is now in, the police truck's supposed to be in any time now, the paperwork is ready at the bank for us to sign for the lease arrangement, so we'll be taking the steps this week to move forward, getting all that taken care of, so we can get it into place.
All right, as, as for that Bobcat?
Yes.
Um, the Carol Silvarn down there, they have, once in a while, maybe twice a year, they get the grapple buckets in, you know, like for moving tree limbs.
Those are...
I would suggest to vigorously pursue, you know, and I was thinking about, you know, if I see one, I'm gonna give you guys a call, because, and the ones that are, that they sell down there are not Bobcat, but they're very, they're compatible to a Bobcat, and they're very good.
I believe, and I don't know if Tom mentioned this to you, one of the things he was thinking was maybe the trencher, since we have two other pieces of equipment to do trencher, see if we couldn't trade the trencher...
You can't trade that when you buy it at a sale like that, the auction, but you could trade it off for a, uh, concrete, uh, jackhammer.
Concrete jackhammer, that was the other thing, yeah.
So, what, what'd you think of it?
Um, it's gonna need new tires. It's, uh, the bucket's gonna, the edge on the snow bucket's gonna have to be replaced.
Just a metal piece?
Yeah, but you know, you gotta get that, you gotta get that, well, you gotta get the old one cut off and new one welded on. But, uh, other than that, I think the city has needed this for a long time. I mean, that would be one piece of equipment that, you know, I cannot figure out why.
Well, and to be all honest, you know as well as I do, in the past, we've always gotten around it because Terry Duffy was using his for the city's behalf, you know, it's kinda like the tools story. For thirty years, to save money, one of the things that the guys always did is their tools, their, their Bobcat, uh, I know Bob used his four-wheeler so that they could, uh, grate the ball fields and different things of that nature, I mean, i- it was common practice, and I, and I applaud them for trying to save money, but at some point, you get so far behind, you look up one day and you need all kinds of stuff and don't have the money to supply all the things you need, so...
But you'll find that that's Skidsteers, it would be used daily.
Oh, yeah, they've already been using it, so...
Are they gonna haul it? That was the next item.
I don't know much.
What? Did you think of this?
Um, did Tom talk to you about that?
No. I told him he could make himself one. We've got enough material somewhere, he could build him a trailer.
There you go.
See, I brought our, my Skidsteer and, and the trailer, and I showed him.
Yeah, he hit me up, he was wanting to buy a trailer, and I suggested maybe there were maybe some higher priorities than getting a trailer for his Bobcat.
What are you gonna use, how are you gonna get the Bobcat to South Sixteenth Street?
We'll just hook it with the forks on the, on the payload.
Oh, gee.
Drive it.
No, well, it's something we'll have to look into and figure out what we're gonna do.
You might just go get one right now.
What else?
Generous.
What else?
Oh, sorry, that was it, police truck and the ton truck.
Okay, F is committee and department head reports? Are there any today?
Back to that blue space thing, Adam.
Yes.
The attorneys are still reviewing them?
Yeah, they're, I'll be real honest, it's not been something I've put a lot of effort into lately, I'll make sure we get something moving on it. They did tell me that once we did give it to them, it'd probably be six months before they could start, so, um, we need to get the ball running, so that they can get that clock running.
Item number seven is council forum, and I have, um, I have something I wanna just discuss just for a second. Um, several times, somebody has come up to me and asked me, eh, or declared that they have heard that the city was in bad financial state, and they didn't, why didn't they pay their bills, and, so, I just am going to ask right here and now, are, are we having a problem financially, or are we having a problem paying our bills?
No, no.
The second question that I've been asked several times is, do we pay bills through the Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, no, not at all.
Have we ever paid a bill through the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, you have the fortunate scenario tonight of having the current, uh, chamber president and the past chamber president in this room. Other than your allotment that you apply for every year and receive, can you think of a time that we ever cut an additional check to you guys, or had you guys pay for anything on our behalf?
Under my watch.
Okay.
The chamber's financial position.
Yeah.
That, that would have been the most likely whole question.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to ask that question and be done with it.
Why do you think they were asking that?
I have no idea, but it wa- it wasn't, if it had been...
I mean, I've heard that we don't pay bills in a timely manner, too.
If it was just one time that I was asked, I would've just let it go, but it wasn't just one time, and it wasn't just one person. So, I just wanted to approach it right here at the council meeting, so we could talk about it, and I think a lot of people don't understand that you can't bring a bill in and have somebody write a check for it that day, it has to be presented at the council meeting, and if it's brought in way before the next council meeting, it has to wait.
Yeah, it, it's...
And that, it's timing.
It's typically a struggle, 'cause you'll have a local vendor provide you a bill, say, on the fifteenth of the month, well, we just had a claims meeting on the twelfth or the thirteenth of the month, that means there's not gonna be another claims meeting for almost thirty days, so it's not even gonna be approved by the council for thirty days before it's getting approved, and a lot of times, we try to, uh, we try to be proactive in those scenarios. I'll give you the example. I just today was saying to Tom, in the case of the, um, concrete work that Richie Allen did down, uh, downtown for us, the curb work, I asked Tom, "Have you seen a bill yet from Richie Allen?" And he said, "No," and I said, "Well, we need to make sure we get that in our hands before, at least a couple of days before the claims process in November. Otherwise, we'll get it in the middle of November, and he'll be unhappy that he's not getting paid till the middle of December, when in essence, i- it's more of a timing issue, and we just wanna be as proactive as possible in those cases."
Okay, speaking of which, um, along Richie Allen there, I think what he did really looks good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is Pauline gonna do something there with hers?
She contacted me, oh, maybe a month ago, I wanna say, a little bit less than a month ago, notified us that they were intending to do sidewalk work over there, and asked if we'd be doing the curb work if they did the sidewalk work. I said, you know, "I'd wanna encourage anything that included the businesses planning to do their work like that," and that...
I talked to Richie about that. Um, you know how that steps up, up there? Um, there's a little curb in front of that wall that's right along the street, and his suggestion was, and I think it's an excellent one, is to tear that out, get down to street level, put a normal sidewalk in, and put the wall up against your property, you know, like, there's that little narrow wall, like up against Mike and Wayne's place there, you know, and block that off there, so they will never have that issue for opening doors and, you know, that big drop-off. And Pauline, you know, was real receptive to that idea, too, and they could put a little ramp in there, you know, to get...
She apparently has a family member in Minnesota that has a plan in place on how this is going to look.
Oh, okay.
But she contacted me and told me that they wouldn't be working on this till next year now, and I said, "You just need to give us enough, ample enough time notice that, I mean, please, don't show up two days before you plan on doing this," and said, "Hey, we want you guys to do this now." I mean, give us enough time that we can build it into our work schedules.
But I think that would be an excellent addition down there, instead of that wall that's falling apart, and if you look real close, the old curb was ground off in front of that, so at one time, there was, you know, a regular sidewalk, whether, why that got built, I'm not sure, but, be that as it may, I'm glad, I would be glad to see that get done, too, because...
That would be really wonderful.
Yeah, 'cause that's gonna sit way up in the air like that.
One question regards to that, I don't know if Pauline has done anything with the facade improvement. One thing that went by and did with their facade is all ADA problems were taken care of at that time. So, I don't know if that's something you need to talk with, with Frank's about.
Well, they're just, on the top end, where they walk in, a shallow ramp would be more efficient, or something.
Because isn't there a time limit, we're, we're talking about the ADA?
Starting in January, what, what they did was, they changed a policy that in January, any street projects you do, um, will prompt, i- it used to be that if you were doing maintenance, that did not prompt an ADA requirement. Well, now, even overlay projects, where they consider those usually maintenance projects, will now be considered a, an act that would necessitate ADA compliance issues now.
But that'd be private property, so she wouldn't be concerned with that, true. Walk-in, true.
Thank you for discussing that, I appreciate it.
It could be something that could be a little, the facade improvement in regards to the pavement.
Well, if they sign up for it, that's their, you know, they're gonna have to deal with that. Any other?
Did?
Going back...
Did they?
Good, go, okay.
Go, no, I was just asking, you worked with it, do you know if they were interested in it?
I didn't work with it.
Viking? Okay, okay.
And I'm not on the committee.
Oh, that's right, okay.
'Cause I can't be.
Okay.
Going, going back to the financial, you know, rumors that were going around, was, there was something that was being said that our bond rating is not that good, uh, and, you know, I checked with Adam, and our bond rating is excellent, we're triple A, are we?
No, 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 we're not triple A. We're, uh, we're single A with advancement opportunities, stable opportunities, uh, which is consistent with Dennison and a lot of other, I mean, it's...
How do you raise that bond rating up?
Uh, more money in the bank, less debt on your paper book, uh, and, um, I mean, they're getting much tougher about how they look at municipalities and your bond ratings, because they've seen, like the city of Detroit, the city of Bell, California, and they're all of a sudden, it used to be that being a municipality pretty much gave you a, almost a guaranteed good rating, and the only way you got a bad rating is if your financial situation got debt-heavy. Well, now, with pension issues and lowered valuations in your communities, they're starting to get much tougher on communities. Um, you're seeing the averages for a lot of communities going down, so... And we just had our analysis done, uh, earlier this year, associated with the street project for the first time, in fact. Typically, municipalities do not get pond ratings, but we were advised by Dorsey and